...our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, meeting the order, please. First of all, I'd like to stand for the pledge allegiance. The flag is right over here.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to thank the City of St. Clair for hosting this. This summertime, we actually do our traveling road show, as we so call it, and I appreciate the harbor letting us have this. I know we have some of the city officials in attendance. I'm going to let you introduce them a little bit later before we start our new business, Sir Mike, but once again, thanks for having us. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Heidman?
Here.
Commissioner Greitop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Samasko?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Here.
Item number three, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda. Item number eight, to delete 11E.
I move that we delete item 11E, the light station equipment, electrical work.
Second. Okay, I have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I would move that we accept the amended agenda.
Court. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number five, meetings previous minutes.
At this time, I'd like to that the minutes from June 20th, 2013 commission meeting, and also that June 11th, 2013 standing committee meetings be approved and filed.
Court. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number six, proclamations.
I would move the approval of the proclamation recognizing the library for the blind and physically handicapped 35-year celebration.
Court. Is that something you want to present to them, Howard, in later days, Allison? Is that something, what would your choice of?
We could. What would work out for you, Allison?
The celebration is scheduled for next Wednesday. It's an open house at the main library, so if you'd like to do it at that time, we'll be available.
So next Wednesday has the library open house. What time?
One until six.
One till six. Okay.
One to six. I should be able to make that.
Okay, very good. I had a motion and second on that proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number seven on the consent agenda, items A through G. This time, I would move to approve items 7A through 7G on the consent agenda. Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Item number eight, reports of standing and special committees. If it seems like we go through some of this stuff relatively quick, the format with the Board of Commissioners, we actually have a full board meeting at the B-1st of every month, first Thursday, and that's where we do a lot of discussion as far as our agenda items, and we pass them on to our full board meeting for approval. So sometimes, if you see there's not a lot of discussion, these things have been pretty thoroughly hatched out previously, so. Item number eight, reports of standing, special committees. Mr. Greitop?
I have nothing, sir. Take your pens.
Mr. Pressing. Mr. Samasko? Lord, board. Mr. Tomian?
I have nothing this evening.
Howard?
Nothing on your agenda.
I'm going to take it past myself. Item number nine, citizens wishing to address the board. I have one citizen wishing to address the board at this time. Lisa Ponk?
Ponck.
Ponk. 7731, Marl Cochraville, Michigan, 48039, on animal control. You have three minutes. You can go, you can stand right here, Lisa. Sure.
My name is Lisa, and I own Dangerous Farm, E. Coin Rescue. We specialize in saving severely abused and neglected horses. I talk to many people in St. Clair County on a daily basis. I have yet to talk to one person who has a single good thing to say about St. Clair County Animal Control. Not one supporter, not one person who says to me, "You're wrong, they do a great job." In regards to the horses rescued in Birchville last week, Officer Jewell, by his office's own admission, knew about those horses for two years and went to the property weekly to check them. Yet on the night they were rescued at 11:00 PM, the officer in charge was so appalled at the condition of the horses and the living environment, he ordered them out immediately. The following day, the county vet came out and was equally disgusted at the condition of the horses, especially the mare and filly. Officer Jewell had many chances to do the right thing, yet week after week, he simply turned his back and walked away. I've had many conversations with Ken Jewell and his bosses to get him to be more of an advocate for the animals, but no improvements have been made. The days of the traditional animal control officer need to be over. McComb's Livingston and Santa Lat Counties have replaced their archaic attitude animal control officers with people who are advocates for the animals, who are educated and interested in teaching proper animal care. We need to follow these models and get into the 21st century. In less than one week, I obtained over 337 signatures from St. Clair County residents who agree we need someone in animal control who is an advocate for the animals. It appears the citizens have had enough of the apathy and arrogance. These are just a few comments from some of the frustrated St. Clair County residents who came to me with their stories. Allington, my neighbor's dog was neglected and animal control was out here to see it. They left the dog and didn't do anything to the owner. Within months following the visit, the dog passed away alone and neglected. Nothing was done to the owner at all. Fort Greshit, I have a horse on my roof that's not being taken care of. All of my neighbors have called that hundreds of times over the years, still nothing has been done to help the horse. Riley Township, we have a neighbor who is poisoning dogs and shooting fox, they will do nothing about it. Sick of his answers, no proof, they don't even attempt to stop him. Fort Greshit Township, I called several times about five dogs living in a house by themselves. They were fed and watered but never came outside. They were living in their own feces and urine. After many failed attempts to have animal control help these dogs, we finally got help from another animal rescue agency. Columbus, I reported a neglected horse some years ago, and when I called to find out the results, I was literally yelled at. He stated that I was causing trouble and that my horse was healthy. I asked if he had the wrong horse, and saw my horse, it was my neighbor's. The horse's hooves were curled out and the horse was bloated with worms and full of burrs. Port Huron, animal abuse has grown rapid in our country, and animal lovers' cries and pleas for help are brushed under the rug. Just recently, these horses and the poor beagles in Lakeport as well, just horrible conditions, and to know that he has been aware. Please listen to your citizens for the sake of our suffering animals. Their tax dollars are paying your salary. They deserve a voice, the animals are depending on us to do the right thing. There are so many out there suffering, and there's no help for any of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to, ah, you need to fill out a, okay.
Go ahead and talk while you're.
Oh, you don't want to talk, and then you can just hand it to us when you're done there. I happen to know Jody, so I'll.
My name's Jody Thompson, I live in Birchville Township.
Jody, I'm sorry. Before you start, as Sergeant Arms, I want to remind, you have three minutes.
Yeah. I'm Jody Thompson, I live in Birchville Township. I work with an animal rescue. We were called today to rescue feral cats from a business right around the block here. We have captured seven cats lately. Animal Control was called, they said they come out, they will euthanize them on spot. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Robin Meldrum, 1918 Mini Street, Port Huron, Michigan.
Hi, I'm Code Director of the National Rescue Department, we're Rescue Department in Port Huron, and we work hard for the rescue group that helped the dogs in Lakeport. And to tell you the truth, I went out there two nights before they were actually pulled from the house, and I was thoroughly disgusted with the conditions in which they were listed. There was large amounts of urine and feces that they were living in, the windows were cracked about this much on one side, and you could put your hand through that crack and feel the heat inside that house. And when I called the Sheriff's Department that night, I was told that animal control and the Sheriff's Department have both been out there, and they both thought that those conditions were okay. And I think that that pretty much speaks for itself, that something does need to be done on behalf of these animals because there's way too much suffering for them to suffer.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before us? Item number 11, 11A. Actually, before we get into that, we are going to do the, Mr. Mike Booth here, the city manager, I see you have a handful of your city council people in attendance tonight. Would you like to do some introductions for us?
Do you want me to come up?
You can do them right from there.
Okay. We have four council members with us this evening. Do them alphabetically, we'll start with Mr. Tim Burns.
Mr. Burns.
Mr. Kinswater, which Kinswater? And then we have Gene Krupp, so I'll back up a little bit here, St. here, and Mr. Tom McCartney. Want to say thank you for bringing up St. Clair this evening?
Yeah, I thought it was a great time to bring the guys down there, especially with the boat race going on and, you know, just all the activity in town and stuff. So we wanted a chance to really see the marina facility, too, because I know when we had talked with the other members, some of the launch issues had worked themselves out. We had spoke about the marina facilities and how nice and how important they were to the county and the city, so thanks again for having us. Item number eight, the approval of the county's disbursements.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve county, St. Clair County disbursements for the month of June 2013 in the amount of $8,528,526.38.
Support. Discussion on any of these? Roll call.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yep.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. Item number B, Resolution 13-17, the Area Agency on Aging 1B Annual Implementation Plan.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the adoption of Resolution 13-17, approving the annual implementation plan of the Area Agency on Aging 1B.
Second. Any discussion on any of that? Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. Item number C, the inter-agency agreement between the Family Division and Community Mental Health regarding the day treatment, night watch.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the inter-agency agreement between the 34th, 31st Circuit Court, Family Division, and Community Mental Health for the day treatment, night watch program in the amount of $191,561 for a term of two, I'm sorry, 10/1/2012 through 9/30/2013.
Support. Do I have any questions? Gary Ratauski is in attendance, I saw him here this night. Any questions for Gary regarding this issue at all? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. Item number D, the 2012 Homeland Security Operations Stone Garden Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the 2012 Homeland Security Operations Stone Garden Grant Agreement in the amount of $164,730.
Support. Any discussion? It's 100% federal, no match. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number E, the light station equipment building, electrical work.
That was, that was.
All right, and then the item F, Irrevocable Letter of Credit.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the renewal of the Irrevocable Letter of Credit for the Smith Creek landfill with Palmer Bank and Trust for a two-year term expiring July 31st, 2015, at a cost of $6,488.
Second. Discussion on any of this at all? Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. Item number G, the Sheldon Construction Accounts Receivable Write-Off from the landfill.
This time, I would move to write off the accounts receivable balance for Sheldon Construction Incorporated, amount of $66,428.40.
Second. Discussion on this? Roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. Item number H, the Fixed Base Operation Concessions Agreement with Aviation Express. Just to give a little history lesson, I guess, on this, many of you know, as all of you know, the county now purchases and owns the assets out at the St. Clair County Airport that was purchased via through a sizable federal grant. Through that process, Rick Orzel, Orzel Aviation, who has been at the airport for a long time, notified us that he was looking to retire, that the county then would have to go out and get somebody to become their fixed base operator, and I do have Kathy in attendance tonight. Part of the committee, we went out for a request for proposal, we received four different requests, we brought in individuals for interviews, one of them actually backed out. The committee included Mr. Greitop, Mr. Tomian, myself, the Kathy, their hypnotics, individuals, and after sitting down and going through this, it was overwhelmingly supportive of the Aviation Express. Previous experience ran an FBO in Alpena and is currently residing down here now in Moog Bag. When does he anticipate?
August 1st.
August 1st, okay, that was a question. So just looking to move forward with this agreement here, and is there any questions for Kathy at all regarding this at all?
Just, I got one.
Yes.
Kathy, um, did I make that? Do we have a list compiled showing all of our current tenants right now?
Yes.
Those are the ones that stay with us?
Yes.
Anything new? He'll get a piece of the new stuff. Do we have a current list right now?
I do.
How long is that list? Do you have them just offhand?
How long is that?
How many tenants do we have?
Twelve.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, some of the concerns I know that we had, because Rick Orzel had been a longstanding wrench out at the airport, working on the airplanes, Rick is actually still going to continue that service, so Rick will actually commute from his place where he's going to set up shop, so he's going to kind of be doing some freelance stuff. So the individuals that currently have their planes that Rick was doing work on, they are going to continue to keep their planes and continue to be tenants out at the airport, so that's a good thing.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the approval of the contract with Aviation Express for the fixed base operator services at the airport for a five-year term expiring 7/31/2018.
Support. And as part of that, when you talk about a five-year term, there is a 90-day out clause, if I'm not mistaken, and I know, Mr. Samasko, you had commented on that last time and read through the agreement, and it's, I don't want to say it's in favor of the counties, but the county controls the contract from A to Z, so. David?
Yeah, I'll support having him come on board, but what's going to happen with Orzel, and when is he going to be in this contract? Because that's part of the.
This contract will end August 1st.
So then, how far from that point on do you pay Orzel?
When then, at August 1st.
Okay, any other? We had a motion and a second. Give me a roll call on that.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. Item number I, the Strategic Federal Affairs, the Grant Writing Service Continuation.
This time, I'd like to move to continue the grant writing services portion of the agreement with Strategic Federal Affairs for the duration of the contract expiring 8/31/14.
Court. Any discussion on this? Some comments I would like to make for the city officials of St. Clair, just so you are aware of this, St. Clair County does employ a full-time lobbying firm, and we actually use them also for full-time grant writing, because it was an area that we really had a void, so if you ever, if there's ever any priority projects, and I know we've talked about a few things here in the city, some things that if you need these services, please contact the county, because we do have people that work on different things all over the county, it's just not, you know, specific to one area, so just want you to be aware of that. Any more on that at all? Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Yes. Item number I, the Health Department Request for Revisions to the Manning Table.
I or J? J.
J, I'm sorry.
No, that was the strategic grant writing.
Yeah, I was the.
Grant writing. Mr. Chair, I would like to move the approval of the revisions to the Health Department Manning Table, eliminating a full-time nutritionist position and replacing with a full-time public health nurse position, and eliminating a full-time vision and hearing coordinator position and replacing with two part-time seasonal vision and hearing technicians.
Support. Discussion on any of these at all? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidman?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Ball?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to mention as the representative of the board with the Health Department that as I think everyone in the community knows, there's going to be a continual rollout of Obamacare in 2014, and they are already anticipating possibly some changes, they will, additional changes they will need to make in how they provide their services in light of this, so I guess what I would say is stay tuned, more to come.
Okay. Item number K, before we get into motion in a second, just want to talk a little bit about this. Mr. Kaufman and myself had a meeting with Bruce Brown here the other day, city manager for Port Huron, just to talk about a whole bunch of different issues, and I know there was a concern at our last meeting that the expansion of the CSL contract, when we hired Mr. Kruger originally, Mr. Kruger was working on the convention center as far as room block agreements, to convention center design, to a whole lot of other stuff. Then when we decided to go with a professional management agreement and work on that piece, we did also put some additional work on Mr. Kruger's plate, which wasn't the initial intent, what we had hired him for, but that just kind of how it morphed into this. Everybody liked Mr. Kruger, they felt very confident that he could work with facilitating an agreement between SMG, the city, and the county. As some discussions with Bruce, basically, we had talked to him about if Mr. Kruger is going to be working on issues that pertain to McMorn Arena, that the McMorn Authority, which is ultimately the funding source, I understand that City of Port Huron oversees McMorn, but McMorn Authority has their own budgets, that the county would like to ask McMorn Authority for, whether it be McMorn Authority or the city, for participation in this, hence if we're going to move forward as a partnership with a professional management arena, then we feel that it's reasonable to ask both people to participate in it. And they have not had their opportunity to have their meetings yet with McMorn Authority along with the city council, so at this time, this is not a time sensitive, this is not a time sensitive issue, I would like to seek to table this until they get an opportunity to get this in front of their proper people on their end, for long and short. So. Mr. Chairman?
I got a couple of things on this. One, the convention center, you know, is going to cost the county approximately $300,000 plus in the deficit for the next 30 years. City of Port Huron's getting a $200,000 plus for the next 30 years, and I'm really concerned, I believe that, I think Port Huron should be the whole cost of this, $40,000 would have covered our costs. Now that the scope has expanded, I think they should get the obligation of covering the costs for this, because they're going to get the majority of the benefit, including McMorn in this, because this is going to include, for us to use our expertise and our management group to get conventions to also assist McMorn, so I think you're correct. Take a listen, see if the City of Port Huron will cover this entire cost, because they will be getting substantial plus for 30 years.
Somebody down there. Carol?
I thought I would move to table the contract amendment with Convention Sports and Leisure International at this time.
I would second that.
Okay, any other questions on this at all?
I don't think there's any discussion on the table.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Okay, moving on, item number L, the Day Treatment, Night Watch Restructure.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the restructure of the Day Treatment, Night Watch Program, including the requested revision to the juvenile center and Day Treatment, Night Watch Manning Tables and associated expenses.
I'll support. Gary Ratauski is here, does anybody have any questions for Gary? Gary came in and spoke with us last time, I know there were some questions as far as some of the meetings that they had with some of the judges and those types of things, and I think that pretty well got flushed out, so.
Oh, just one thing, I understand it very well, but if you wanted to give a little speech so the public can understand a little better, you did come out here to, I'm sorry, as a visit. I'm fine with everything, I understand it very well, but if you wanted to give a little speech.
Yeah, give us the five-minute.
Well, due to declining population at the juvenile center and residential treatment program, we have proposed to implement a program to expand our day treatment program. As part of that expansion, making part of the program an intense program to deal with those, most of those individuals that are currently in our residential treatment program. So we're restructuring staff, and the projected savings that we are looking at is about $1.2 million, of which $516,000 of that would come from the general fund, so that's projected as a savings.
Gary, I understand that Judge Kelly, David, is not a pool of them? Yes.
Isn't Judge Brown primarily responsible for the determination of where these juveniles end up?
Yes, but Judge Kelly is the chief judge of the.
And they worked it out, the judicial part?
Yes. And, uh, Steve? So Judge Kelly's directed you to go forward with this specifically? He's approved the plan, yes. Judge, you to go forward with this all? Yes.
Yeah, and Woody, and, I'm sorry, Judge Brown was part of those discussions, Mr. Kaufman, Gary met with the two judges.
Could I get something, Bill, on that, because I was getting mixed signals from Judge Brown, and then the court also lied, what transpired there?
Well, and Gary, feel free to jump in, because you were obviously there at that time as well. There were a lot of concerns that Judge Brown expressed. He agreed that he would take advantage of the program. He discussed some of the details that I think he may not have been aware of before, we shared those with him, but in the end, what he said is, "I will use the program, I will take advantage of it, however, if I have juveniles that I feel are better suited to be placed in a residential treatment facility, I will still be sentencing them accordingly." We assured him that all of the funding currently used for that purpose will stay in place. used for that purpose will stay in place. We've actually increased the amount of money that could be used for residential treatment outside of the county, and he seemed to be happy with that. He did indicate he would spend some time talking with the chief judge about it the next day. We understand that he has done so, and we did get messages from the chief judge's office saying, go ahead and move forward with the program.
We would just like the record, our chairperson will allow, clerk, to just make sure the record indicates that it was supported by both Judge Kelly and Judge Brown.
Right. Absolutely. When we're talking about these treatment services, could you give the public a little bit of a breakdown of exactly what kind of services, like substance abuse, anger management, that sort of thing?
Yes, our day treatment program will provide substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment. We have full-time therapists that will be providing that. Our staff also does surveillance on the kids when they're gone. So basically, it's the next best thing to a lockup facility, and then we know their whereabouts at all times, and if they violate that, they violate their probation. That takes place around the clock. We also do drug testing. The families are involved. Families are required to cooperate and be involved in the program. They have family sessions with our health therapist. Staff are also there with the families if they're having any difficulties with the kids at home in the evening hours. Staff will go out, help them, problem solve, and help them get through that type of situation. So it's a pretty well-rounded program, fairly intense.
Does that include a fairly comprehensive educational program too?
Just starting to get today, yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, the kids are, because a lot of the kids we have may have been suspended or expelled from school, and because they're on probation, they are ordered in an integral program, and they receive an education and do credit recovery. They also have the GPD component for those kids, older kids that are not able to recover that many credits. So the educational component is a deep piece.
Do you feel that that's been fairly successful?
Oh, definitely, yes. The current day treatment program has been, it exists for 18 years. It's a very successful program. Other counties have come out to look at it, other states actually. So it's a, it's a well-known program, and it's been successful for, and it does save the county a lot of money because, and again, to address Judge Brown's concerns, there are kids that we are going to have to replace. We understand that going in, the program we're proposing is not a one-size-fits-all, but we feel that the majority of kids that we can reach, we can keep them in the county, we can work with the families here, and be more effective, and again, realize a pretty big cost savings.
Any other questions here at all? Okay, any roll call, please?
Mr. Semasko?
Yes.
Mr. Tomian?
Yes.
Mr. Heidemann?
Yes.
Mr. Greatop?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Mr. Chairperson.
Yes. Item number M, the Workman's Compensation Contract Renewal.
This time, this time I would move to approve the agreement of doing the contract with Rod Spire Services for Workman's Compensation Benefits for term expiring 8/31/2014.
Second, Heidemann. Discussion on this at all? Just to renew, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number N, the Employment Agreement for the Veterinary Tech.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the employment agreement with Amy Berry, licensed veterinary technician, as presented in our agenda packet.
Support? Any other questions on this at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number O, the Resolution 13-18 authorizing the S2 grant agreement with the Public Department. The public, Public Works tongue-tied here.
At this time, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 13-18 authorizing the S2 grant agreement with the Department of Public Works.
Support? I have Kurt Weston here from the Road Commission. Kurt, would you like to say anything on this?
This is just a second request from the Board of Public Works to you folks as the owners of the wastewater treatment plant down in Elginak. We came last November asking for a role to go after a grant, which we did receive, some $30,000. Now we're coming after a second grant. That was for the preliminary planning. Now we're coming after a second grant, which will be for the final design phase, again, somewhere in the $30,000 range. Being successful means that the three entities of Clay, IRA, and Elginak will be assuming a 10% charge, a fee charge on this grant. So between the three entities, for about $2,000 apiece, they are going to enjoy $70,000 of the grant money. If in fact, we do receive this, and we're pretty hopeful that we will. So that's our request to that.
Okay. Any other questions for?
Just a, just a comment that Commissioner Rushing and I both attended at one meeting at down in IRA, and it was a well-presented meeting. The group that they had come in there, did the slideshow presentation, did an awesome job. You could understand everything they were doing, and you could tell by what they're doing, they know what they're doing. And I think that it's going to make this plant just that much better, and last that much longer, for a small amount of money from those local communities where they're all more than willing to put up that money. So good job, guys.
Okay, any other comments on this at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number 12, the Administrator's Report.
I'll just cover a couple of highlights for you today. First of all, I want to thank Kathy and the board members, as well as the members of the Aeronautics Board that participated in the selection of the FBO. And we're already seeing some changes out at the airport as a result. We're currently working on a new contract for fuel, and I think the board will be pleased. They'll start seeing some increased revenues out at the airport, that will certainly help Kathy's budget. Convention Center, we have begun our negotiations with SMG. A key component of our contract with them is the incentives portion of their compensation. We have discussed internally what those incentives should really focus on. We've been working with Phil Kruger as well to give us advice on what typically we see in incentive packages. We've really got three areas that we're going to focus on. One is the impact that the facility has on the community. And one of the reasons that the board agreed to undertake this project is we felt that it would have a significant economic impact on the community. And that is something that we're certainly going to be looking towards SMG to ensure that they have as much of an impact on the community as possible, meaning as many bed nights in hotels. As Marcy Fogel has told you before, when we have visitors to the community, a day tripper doesn't spend anywhere near as much money as people that spend a night or multiple nights here. So if we can attract events at the convention center that cause people to spend the night here, they're more likely to spend money in the community, and all of us will benefit from that. The other is financial accountability. You know, every year, we'll put together, we'll sit down with SMG, the board will, and develop a pro forma for the convention center, along with a budget. Certainly, the ability to hit or exceed the target set in the pro forma, and as well as their ability to reduce any allocation that the county may have to provide to the facility is going to be a key measure that we look at. And finally, something that's extremely important, I think, to all of us is customer service. They will be asked to survey the customers that attend the facility, not just those that are there for a convention or some type of a consumer show, but we're also going to be asking them to work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and our other project partners out there, the hotel owner and operator, and the restaurant as well, to make sure that everything is running smoothly, everybody is happy. And if we don't succeed with the catering, if we don't succeed with the hotel, which is adjoined to it, then the convention center might succeed also. So those are the three measures that we'll be looking at, and we're currently waiting for their response and some ideas from them on how they might measure some of these. And then we'll be working very closely with Bill Kruger to review and get his input on what that might show. You've probably noticed a lot of construction equipment up at the north end of the property near the bridge. That is for utility lines that are being moved. Right now, the water and the sewer lines, the storage sewer lines up at the facility run right underneath where the event center will be. Those are all being relocated. They are digging up a lot of material left over from the cement plant, a lot of foundations, a lot of concrete with rerod that was left there over the years. So a lot of that is being moved, and we're going to bring in some additional equipment to help break that up and get that material out of there.
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
You mentioned our concern at the convention center for any negative cash flow. Commissioner Rushing mentioned it could be in the neighborhood of $300,000. You're saying, obviously, it's going to take a year or two to get up and running, but if we're going to be looking at a year or two, that $300,000 is going away and having a positive cash flow there. That's one of our goals.
Well, our goal is to eliminate that as quickly as possible. Whether it's going to take two years or four years, we don't know. That's something we'll have to work with them on. Obviously, it will take a number of years for our convention center to be known by the community, by those meeting planners that schedule the use of the facility. So it's going to take a while before you're going to see that really cranking out a lot of, a lot of numbers.
I'm hoping it won't be that long. SMG, they have connections all over the state of Michigan. The other comment was made by Commissioner Semasko, and that is the city's interest in this, and I agree with Commissioner Semasko. The city should really be wanting to get involved with us in this joint management thing because they have a negative cash flow at the McMorn complex, and if they can make that a positive thing, that's going to help them out.
Yes.
And I, I think Commissioner Semasko is right on top of that in terms of the city should really be wanting to get involved in this discussion as soon as possible.
Bill, question for Bill?
Sure.
Good, Bill. Who are you relying on to develop the metrics for the performance incentives?
Actually, we're asking them to give us their first pass at it, and then we will be getting in touch with Mr. Kruger.
You're going to have CSL help you with that?
Yes.
All right. And on the issue with this operating deficit, my understanding was that this projected operating deficit was for the lifetime of the facility. It wasn't likely to go away unless we have some startling, some super performance out there. Wasn't it projected, basically have a subsidy for the county for the next 30 years?
There were actually a couple of projections made.
When we first started the discussion, there were projections on breakeven, you know, best case, middle case, worst case. But when we rolled that out, make no mistake, I was, I said, there's no way I'm going to walk out and tell everybody that this thing's going to be a breakeven situation, and it lays a $300,000 goose egg. I'd rather give you a worst-case scenario, and then...
The Davis Center, Utah facility, they use as one of their comparisons, for many, many years operated a deficit, and the county contributed to that. And I didn't want to give the impression that we were thinking this is going to be in two years. You know, that was not my understanding of what was being put out there by the experts.
And I would just reiterate what the chairperson said, is we had a number of scenarios. And if you look at the report that CSL developed, there are a number of different proposals set there that, it depends on how effective we are, how well we design this, how well we market it, how well it's received by the customers. And one of the projections was that it will break even. There were worst-case scenarios presented as well, and we certainly didn't want to give the public the impression that everything was going to go just roses.
I didn't want to give that impression either here, and I think that's... Well, one thing I think you really got to look at, that Holiday Inn Express that's coming to Fort Hareen, okay? That Holiday Inn Express is coming because that convention center is getting built. We've had a meeting with those guys. The taxing portion of that facility on the county, I ran the numbers, it's roughly $15,000 to $20,000 that the county, remember, we collect 5.62 something non-homestead mills of any investment. So when you start looking at making these investments and subsidies, you have to ask yourself too, how many of these other things are cropping up, and what is your portion that is actually coming back to you? So just there, in that particular...
Tangible benefit.
Yeah, what is tangible? Yeah, so I mean, how many other, you know, spinoffs? And that's really where we're going to have to be able to look at it over an X amount of year period, because you've talked to the guys in Davis County, and that, and their controller absolutely hated that project, but he can, he can pin now, you know, today's an X amount of dollar economic impact to that region, which he's sold on it.
I called him the Bob Kemp of Davis County. He's been on there for many years, and he actually turned him around, and he's an elected official too. So that was interesting.
Yeah.
Just, oh, go ahead.
I think everybody here wants the convention center definitely to succeed, so we've got to do everything in our powers, whatever it takes to try to make this thing succeed. Could you explain why the county gets the tax base and not the township of Fort Hareen, which...
Well, everybody gets their piece.
I know. Why do we get what you just mentioned?
Well, we get 5.69...
Just the public, you know?
Well, if you ever look at your tax bill, you look at your school, you look at what the city, township, you look at the county piece of it, of resident, in, for example, House in St. Clair Residential, it's 5.3 mills come to the county. On non-homestead property, it's 5.6, you know, personal property tax. So the county does receive a large taxing benefit from any investment in the county anywhere. That's why I always often say, we don't pick and choose where things go. I mean, if it goes to KPEC, if it goes to Elginak, St. Clair, Fort Hareen, the county, you know, it's good for the county, good for everybody, so.
One of the points that was made earlier by, and that is that if a person spends a night here at visiting convention thing, Marcy Fogel was saying, they typically spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $350 per night. So the more overnighters you can get, that's a huge impact to the restaurants, the hotels, and if they go shopping, to the...
They don't just have gas to get here.
Yeah, and they have to fill it with gas to get out of town.
So, budgeting for 2014, those meetings continue. Things are looking very good. We revealed at our last meeting what the new number is, what the new target is on reduced expenditure for 2014. Many of the departments and elected officials have already responded and told us they'll be able to match those numbers and meet the goal that has been set for them. So we feel like we're in pretty good shape for developing a good, solid, balanced budget for 2014.
Are we doing a straight percentage, Ken, or what do we?
Right now, we're looking at, it depends. Some departments, we're looking at straight percentage. Other departments, such as all those departments that report to administration...
Are we going to do a straight percentage based on the budget, based on the piece of the budget?
Not necessarily. The side that is controlled by the administrator. What we're doing is all those departments are getting together and saying, okay, between all of you, you've got to come up with $500,000. How are we going to do it? And there's a lot of giving and taking, and we come up with our number, and away we go.
That works for law enforcement courts, but is it more than that, what other groups or bundles have been put together?
We've been trying to work with the criminal justice community, which involves the clerk, the sheriff, road patrol, corrections, the court systems, all of the courts, as well as the prosecutor's office, to try and get them to work together.
Have you done any other ones? Are there any others?
Really, there's not much more left, other than what's on my side, and all of that is going on. And then there are the other departments, such as the Livebury, Parks and Rec, that receive a separate millage, so they're budgeted entirely differently. Last thing I want to just touch on is shortly, you'll be receiving a report from myself and from the Health Department. There's been some concerns in the past about stormwater management and how that program is run in the county. There have been a lot of changes made at the state level, and as a result, some of the territory in the county that used to be overseen through the stormwater program has changed. The Drain Commissioner, we've been working with him and talking with him. I'm sure many of you have talked to him in the past about the stormwater program, the impact that it has on the county drains. As a result of the changes the state has made, the vast majority of the Drain Commissioner's drains are no longer included in that planning document, that planning exercise. So you'll see a lot of other changes, and as the Health Department begins developing and solidifying their plans for 2014 budget, we'll be talking more about changes in that program.
Any other questions for Bill at all?
I move that we accept the Administrator's report as presented.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 13, miscellaneous business. Mr. Rushing?
I just got one. I'm a pretty good backer of the St. Clair County Road Commission, and with the millage that was passed last year, and I kept pestering Kurt and everybody, when the Riley Center Road's going, so I wanted to bring that up again. It did get started on July 15th, gave me an update, looks like a 60-day window to have that bridge in. It's coming from federal money, so we only have to have a 5% map. I believe it's going to be a 42-foot width bridge by federal standards. But that's part of the benefit to the millage that was passed. I know it's going to be done throughout the county, but that just happened to be in my district, and I would bring that up.
Mr. Greatop?
Two things. First off, I'd like to introduce two guys, Ken Hall and Paul Mangus. These are a couple of my fellow Lions guys. We hired them to come up here tonight and do a little cooking for us, so I just wanted to introduce Paul and Ken. Thanks for coming on. And the other item I want to... And the other item I wanted to address was the issue of the three horses that were addressed tonight, and I want to thank Lisa Ponkey and Joey Thompson and Robin Meldrum for speaking and addressing the board tonight. Lisa called me, I think it was on the 19th of this month, with her issues about those three horses that we were talking about, that she had mentioned out there, and animal control. And after talking with her, I dug into it a little bit. I went out and I talked with Sheriff Donlin. I talked with Deputy Ignash from Animal Control. I talked to Ken Jewell from Animal Control. And I was pleased after I had spoken with them that they had done the job that they were supposed to do. I also went a little bit further, and I spoke with the two residences where these horses went. One of the horses went one location, and that was a male horse, went to a particular location. I talked to the person who adopted that horse today. The vet's been out, the hoose have been taken care of, the horse is doing very well. I talked to another person. These were two draft horses. One was a mare and one was a filly, the mom and the baby. They are in another location, and they also have been visited by the vet. The hoose have been taken care of, and the animals are gaining weight and looking real well at this particular time. To take it just a step further, I spoke with the sheriff's office. They have filed charges, or they have gone to the prosecutor's office with charges against the previous owner for handling these three horses the way they did. Those charges are at the prosecutor's office right now, and they are pending, so I can't say a whole lot more about it. I don't know how it's going to shake out. But I appreciate the ladies calling that to my attention. I appreciate the ladies coming and speaking to us today about animal control. Bill, I think what it is though, is a request for review for charges was set up, but the charges have been issued. I don't want to give the impression, I don't believe charges have issued yet. Just a review is pending. They're reviewing. Correct. No charges are filed at this point.
Okay, any other miscellaneous business to come forth at all? Have a motion to receive and file?
At this time, I would move to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information present.
Support.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed adjournment?
Move adjourn. Support.
Aye. Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.